And thank you for all.
Just a little party.
Okay, I started before you. Do I start over?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Rukwiko. So, um... The craft pot storage is on our discussion agenda this evening. While public input is not normally taken during work sessions, the council would like to hear from businesses directly affected by the matter of the craft pot storage on the core of our current and future jobs. Can't wait to introduce our...
Sure.
I just asked her for her title, but if you'd like to turn around. People have asked to have our insurance agent, Alicia Johnson, and she is joining us today. Alicia, what's your official title?
Hi, good evening. My name's Alicia Johnson. I'm the Vice President of Executive Risk for Assured Partners.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, Council, I should say at your pleasure if you have any questions that you want to ask her. I... okay, I didn't know if you wanted me to talk about the change.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the reason you got a new PND is that the email, the first PND letter... So they're not, he's not, we're not trying to see anything. What happened was he misunderstood what we were talking about, the difference between the pier and the craft pot. And he thought, he thought we meant something different about the storage. He thought I was talking about some kind of floating dock that would just be... I don't know where his mind was. Carter was with me. He explained. We felt we were pretty clear that we were looking at the weight, because I realized when I listened to the August 2nd meetings, Council basically had asked, "What's the weight of our new docks? Can they handle this?" So the follow-up, after we got them out of meeting, the follow-up memo from him clarifies that, because he just misunderstood what we were...
You're fortunate.
Yeah, he misunderstood the question. So we say, you know, that's what it's waiting for, but there is an impact, and that kind of lowers the, what do you call them, floor?
Freeboard.
Freeboards. And I didn't know what they were, but Carter looked it up, and I guess that's the distance to the water, but I'm sure you all know that. So that's what that was about, and that's why it was different. It was just a misunderstanding. All right, thank you. Okay, so, um... I guess we will just open up the floor for comments. I'd like to keep the comments at three minutes a person. So, um, is there a sign up for comments this evening, or are we just going to?
There's a sheet.
There's a sheet. There's a sheet, okay. And our parting, and then we'll say five minutes. Five minutes, nice. Okay.
Wait, where's your sheet at? Excuse me.
Right up here, sir. When you're ready to speak, just come on up and sign in, and then state your name and address.
Oh, the sheet looks empty.
Like the first one.
Okay, well, that'd be...
That makes you special.
I'm Terry Thompson. I've been the past State Representative, County Commissioner, and I fish out of Deepwater Bay. I actually have a boat that fishes commercially. I'm the last ones left of the fish that used to be here. I've been fishing here since seven years, which is a long time. The craft pot issue, as I understand, from, I own craft permits for big boats and fish out here. But this is a unique port. This is a port that's on whale watching and fishing together. These vessels that work here, the charter boats, are dependent on those craft pots being adjacent to their boats. They're not something that you can pick up and take off, especially in bowwater. The steepness of the ramp there is dangerous enough that the docks are now a hazard to their customers. And trying to pack a craft pot down there every few hours would be a little bit impossible. So they need to have the craft pots next to their boat and be put off and on, depending on whether they're doing whale watch trip or they're doing a fishing trip or a sit at charters. And that number of pots varies all the time, depending on how many customers buy an ODFW license. These gentlemen have to have those craft pots in that area. And I have to be an expert on navigating the dock, because I got stroke, I don't walk real well anymore, and I have to walk to my stall out of the end of the dock, down by the craft pots. And if you do fall, and you actually get up against the craft pot, it's not magic. You grab something. They don't tip over easy. They're really not a hazard to proceed. The biggest hazard for me is the lack of lighting under your docks. Now, hopefully, you build a new docks. You incorporate some type of lighting that improves that, because you're going down and you have ropes and... The biggest hazard is actually where the docks join. If you see the dark, you can't see that joint well. I've learned how to do it. I go slow. The thing is, in order to make the profit, to make the business profitable, they need those pots, and they need to be in a closed pot somewhere. Now, there's other pots that are on vice board boats. My suggestion is, let this thing be for now, and when you build the new docks, build a lined area so that they know when they're dead in the center, and they can keep them inside the line. And that would solve the problem. And hopefully, you're going to build new docks in the future. So that's, that's the problem, and I think that's the solution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Yes?
My name's Noily Eaton, and I... Oh, I have to say, so, um, the interest of keeping it short, I'm just going to read the statement that I prepared.
Okay.
"I am a partner at Trade Winds Charter, right there. I merely express my deep concern regarding the proposal to remove craft pots from the docks of the City of Deepwater Bay. The financial implications of such a decision would be substantial, affecting a large number of people and creating additional liability concerns. Fishing trips that incorporate crabbing as part of their guided services are a major attraction for visitors to Deepwater Bay. In fact, approximately eighty percent of individuals who charter on these fishing trips are specifically interested in including crabbing. Removing craft pots from the docks would directly impact the ability of these businesses to provide the experiences that customers seek, jeopardizing their overall viability and sustainability. The financial impact of eliminating craft pots from the docks would extend far beyond the businesses themselves. It would disrupt the local tourism industry, affecting various stakeholders such as hotels, restaurants, and other establishments that benefit from the influx of visitors attracted to fishing and crabbing trips in Deepwater Bay. The resulting loss of revenue and jobs would have a ripple effect on the entire community. Furthermore, the removal of craft pots would introduce additional liability concerns for fishing trip operators. It forced to find alternative methods to conduct crabbing, such as hauling pots on and off the docks. It would create a higher risk of accidents, injuries, and property damage. The increased physical strain and logistical challenges of these alternative methods would expose the city and boat operators to greater liability. Instead of removing craft pots, we should explore collaborative solutions that prioritize safety without compromising the economic vitality of the community. Working together, I believe that we can develop and enforce comprehensive safety regulations that addresses concerns related to both pedestrian safety and the effective use of dock space, such as removing all unnecessary items off the docks, improving inspections and communication between mortgage holders and the harbor master. This approach would allow businesses to continue offering guided fishing trips with crabbing as a key component, preserving the unique experience that attracts visitors to Deepwater Bay. Our municipal city councils should reconsider the proposal to remove craft pots from the docks. The financial impact on fishing trip operators, the broader tourism industry, and resulting liability concerns must be carefully considered. Let's work together to find a balanced solution that prioritizes safety while preserving the economic prosperity and unique experiences that Deepwater Bay has to offer. Thank you for the attention to this matter, and I trust that you'll take into account the concerns raised by the charter operators and the community as a whole."
Thank you. Is there a next speaker?
Well, hello, I'm Jerkin Turner, and I have the tackle buster in Deepwater Bay.
Oh, Jerkin's talking.
What?
He just said Jerkin's talking.
Jerkin, they're talking.
Pay attention.
We did about this broadcast.
What do you get?
I guess.
Okay.
Shu-Lai just, uh, Shu-Lai was just, just joined, so I think she thinks...
Uh, she was open, probably.
Oh, I got excited. I'm sorry. I didn't know I was muted.
Okay, let's mute. Go ahead. You can hear her.
Okay, well, now you know who I am. Thank you for that. That was spot on. But that was really good. I can't believe we're even here talking about this after all these years, not fucking decades. These craft pots have been on the dock without a single issue. However, I have seen an effort, and I'm very glad to see the cleanup on the docks, because I agree that there was too much stuff on the docks. And now it looks really presentable, workable, down there. But asking us to remove craft pots as a part of our work that we need on a regular basis is really going to create issues for our business and for our crew and for our customers. I'd really like this city council to readdress that. And I like the idea of checking and cleaning and see how things are going down there. One of the things I was thinking about while she was talking is I would like to invite, if there's any real questions or concerns of this council, invite you to go with me on one of our other boats and see exactly how this is done. And invite you to get hands-on and see what this is all about. And then maybe you'll have a better understanding why this is so important to leave it as it is. I would, I would be more comfortable if you ask me questions, and maybe I can answer them. So, at any time, whether it's now or in the future, please ask questions. But I would really like to see, on the new docks, either a signed area on the docks, like Terry mentioned, striking it out so we have an area, or do something similar to what Newport does down at South Beach, where we have an area that, what they've done is a floating dock or a floating unit that we can set all the docks on or all the craft pots on, in an area that takes them off of the main runway of the main docks. So that's an option that I would like to look back to. So... That's all I have at this time. If you have any questions, I'd love to...
Yeah, sure. Thank you, by the way. I've sat in China for the other day down in the harbor. I learned a lot. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Quantity of craft pots today versus like ten, fifteen years ago? Is there like a lot more, or?
Not, as far as the charter boats, they are about the same. Maybe the sport boats.
Sport boats.
And as far as the craft pots themselves, they're not a heavy item by comparison to people walking on the docks. You're looking at a weight of about twenty-five pounds per pot. And average charter boat has possibly as little as six pots, up to twelve or fourteen, one of them half a ton. So that's about the maximum number. As far as the actual space that they take up, I'm going to use an example here. We built at my son's house a unit that put the trash cans in, that elevate them and keep them in, just using some two-by-fours. And ironically, it's about exactly the same space. It really isn't a lot of space. It's all the other stuff that you guys saw on the dock that was an issue. But I feel like it was an issue. But the craft pots, while they're not that heavy, because they're not a commercial pot. They're sport pots. And the amount of space that they take up really, if you put them in a line, in alignment with the pylons, any existing pylons, they don't take up that much space. As long as everything's kept neat, tidy, and in order. No questions?
Hello, this is you that I know. My name's Craig Poppins. I was born and raised in Deepwater Bay and been in the charter industry basically the whole ass since I was twelve, so about forty years. And I just want to really align my opinions with really all the speakers. Terry said exactly, and Noily both said exactly what my really opinion is. Just really thinking about it for the last month since I was kind of aware that this was potentially an issue for the city is trying to really think through really what all the possibilities are and what's really practical. The situation we have now is really the only practical measure, at least for the charter boat operators. For the private boat operators, it might be something where you could, we could ask them at the end of their day of working and cleaning their boat to store their boats on their boats, or their pots on their boats. Because they don't have the issue like we do with immediately coming in for fishing trip, taking off their craft pots, immediately going back out whale watching. They can basically, they're done with their fishing trip, they're in their boat, they can set their pots right back on. So for the sport boats, I think that to me seems like the most practical solution for charter boats. Carrying them back up, back and forth, like I usually have twelve to fourteen pots on the dock. To carry that many pots back and forth every day would just be completely impractical, especially at low tide, carrying them down. I only carry them down once a season and up once a season at high tide, because at low tide, it's just too steep. I would, I would just wouldn't, I just wouldn't be able to crab on any low tide days. And I don't even know where I would put them if I couldn't keep them on the dock. I suppose I'd have to buy a new truck and find a way to put them in the back of it and then have my deckhand and myself carrying them down at the beginning of the day and then after the trip, before I go whale watching, spend a half hour carrying back up and stacking back in my truck that I'd have to buy for this one purpose, because they wouldn't all fit in the truck I already have. So to me, as much as I understand not wanting clutter or visibly anything that might look offensive to anybody on the dock, I think as much, it brings as much charm to the dock because we are kind of a working port. And people, most of my customers, even my cruise customers, like, "Oh, cool, you guys got craft pots? You guys grab..." I mean, that's kind of the daily kind of conversation. And since this is not really a yacht harbor, like, we've probably all seen and spent time other places that have basically just yacht harbors for yachts, where they don't have the fishing issues. This is really a working fishing port, and I think that's the charm of Deepwater Bay. And so, if there was another practical solution, I'd be okay with looking at it, just I haven't seen one that, that it all seemed cracked. There was ones that were doable. They were just so notoriously difficult. They would just be impractical, or at least that's in the charter.
So, I have an idea. I just want to know what you think of it. What if Trade Winds bought a barge, part bottom mortgage space for that, and Dockside bought a barge, part mortgage space? And, um...
Where are we going to put a barge?
Okay, that's enough. There's no conflict. No. Then you'd have to get a different mortgage space. So the charter boats would buy, companies, whoever, individuals, whatever, would buy an additional mortgage space and offload it to a different vessel, essentially, on the docks. But it wouldn't be on the major quality docks, because I really don't want to see the craft pots any longer on our main public docks. It's, it's public docks.
Yeah, that is, oh, sorry.
No, I don't think so.
I had thought about that proposal. I had been talking to Roy a little bit about it, because I was like, "Well, what would I do if I just rented the mortgage space in front of me and bought another boat just to store pots?" You know, which seems financially prohibitive for most of the guys, but, you know, maybe I can do that. And I thought, "Well, okay, so Trade Winds is going to have to have a barge for each dock, and Dockside would have to have a barge for each dock. And we would have to still carry, you know, unless you're, it's parked right next to you, you still have to carry them halfway down the dock to store them, you know, in between." I'm not saying that that's not possible. I'm saying that seems like you're going to take four or five slips to do that. You're going to need either a floating dock.
Can you explain this place? Could there be one dock vessel for each company?
Well, like on my dock, there's a few Dockside boats and a few Trade Winds boats. So, and then on dock two, it's the same. Dock three is the same. It might be different once we get new docks. So, I guess we either have a, under your thought process, I guess, is have a barge on each dock that one company buys and one company buys the other. We don't, you know, I, we're experienced, who would have to, you know, split that out or even vote on it or pay abortion or whatever. And I don't know how big that margin needs to be. It would certainly be, it's a, it's a thought. I don't mind including the extra cost of paying for, you know, additional slip. I still think the problem is, instead of moving them essentially four feet, I'm now, I guess, getting some sort of cart that I need to wheel down, down the dock, and then put on the floating platform. That would add a lot of movement, a lot of liability with other things, carts and things I need to store on the dock to carry those pieces.
But some boats are signed tide, and you could pull up to it.
Yeah, if there was a dock, if there was a floating dock situation in the new docks where it was easy to pull up to, that might be a solution. It would still be time prohibitive, because what happens is like, when all of us, all of us generally come in with about a half hour of each other, so if we were going to, and we generally do whale trips, about thirty minutes or so afterwards. For us to come in, offload our people, then pull over to a floating dock, offload while we're waiting for two or three or four other boats to do the same thing, then pull back over, clean the boat, get it prepped, that's probably an hour, just practically speaking. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that's not something to consider, to look at, if there was a way to design that into the new dock. I think there would be a lot, there'd still be a lot of extra steps. I think what we, or at least I remember we were talking about when we were designing for, when the dock proposal was brought, is we were trying to change the docks to make them a little bit more like, at least for the charter docks, more like dock one, where they were a little wider than the current ones. And instead of having the piers on the outside, having them like dock one, so that you have everything. Because the, the pots aren't much wider than the, than the current piers that are in there. The craft pots are three inches wide. The piers, I believe, are twenty-four inches. So you have three inches sticking out on either side. So if you just keep everything in the center, like we have on dock one, you have a clear three and a half foot walk length. Now, I think the new dock, I think for dock two, I had posed to them that probably, because dock one is eleven and a half feet. If they want more of them, make at least the charter dock maybe extra foot wider, so that there's just, so you have, if you want four feet or four and a half feet of walking space on either side, you can have all the arms you want. But if all the times are in the center, pots can go in the center, and it's not blocking any. At least that was what we had discussed with them when they were doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I may, since I'm on the dock, I'll give you a little bit about the, the dock.
I don't think you're asking me a question.
Well, I just want, I just want to appreciate it. Can you tell us, appreciate it, though? My name's Elizabeth Martin. I'm on the harbor commission, as well as on the dock restoration. Many installments. I really appreciate the questions that you're asking, because it was something that, you know, I want to address tonight, that we're working on, and something that PND, the mitigation issue as far as putting more dock space in. We're right at the limit of what we can do as far as mitigation. I'm not talking about a dock, because I know that's a problem. I'm talking about a vessel. Okay, that's, and that's good, because it's, whatever's going to take up water. So with the new configuration of the docks, we're actually losing two spaces. So with putting barges in or whatever, you're going to lose even more space as a dock that could be, slips that could be rented out. And I'm not saying that it couldn't work, because I think we've all talked about it. You know, everyone is really putting on their thinking head. One, plus how we work together to make this work, and what are our options? And I think that's a very good option. I really do appreciate it. So with the new configuration of the docks, you're going to see all the charters on the first two docks. They're, they're all going to be put on there. The other docks are going to be more finger piers, and you're going to see more of the sport boats on that. So you're going to have a higher density on those first two docks. The dock is far wider. The, the way that the pylons are, are going to be outside pylons instead of down the middle, which is going to give you a lot more space. You're going to have electrical plug-ins, and you're not going to have cords running all over. It's going to be a really clean, safe dock situation. And that was paramount for us when we were designing those docks to make sure that safety was a number one concern that we see what, you know, how these docks are. So I think it's a conversation that we definitely could have. And again, what is speed in other harbors works for him. We have to do what works for us in Deepwater Bay. And so, the other areas that people have talked about, you know, again, we had the mitigation area. We only have so much space in the bay. And, you know, I never even heard about this mitigation thing. It's interesting, but it's a real thing. And they're not going to let us do anything more than what we're doing. And it's, we're down to sea. We're anxious about what we can do. So we are being really creative on what we're doing. We're working with PND. And I believe that we've come up with a really good scenario for the new docks, especially again with the safety procedures. And as some of them mentioned, you know, we've really cleaned up the docks. I'm really proud of everyone that captives, because it was a mess come there. And, you know, having Roy down there and enforce it. This is the way it is, guys. Your mother doesn't work here to clean up. You know, this is, this is it, and it's happening. And I think everyone got the word. And we're just really asking for the council to work with us, because we're, we're, we're working as hard as we can to, to do what we can. And we need you to work with us. And I tell my kids all the time, you know, if it's something really important to you and something that you feel right, they stand up for it, and that's why I'm here right now. This is the right thing to do, to have those pots on the dock. I, I think it's workable for everybody, and we're making concessions, and again, just asking you for your concessions as well. Anyway, does anybody have any questions for me? What concessions are you making? Just cleaning up and getting things together. But they should have heard about the docks in the first place all the time. And that's what happened. I told them, I said, "My dad was a harbor master," which he was, "but it never happened." But things, things just rode and rode and rode. You know, when you don't have anybody down there enforcing things, that's what happens. And I'm, I think, can't step in and give them the harbor master the word that, yeah, which is what the deal is now. So you're not going to sit the dock for that again. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Who's ready for a comment? I can't, come on out.
I'm Jack, partner at Trade Winds on the harbor commission. And did I hear you right, Liz? That the new pylons are on the outside of the docks or in the middle of the docks?
They're on the middle.
They're on the middle. I'm wrong. Very good.
Right.
Three and four, they're on the end.
That, that's the...
Yeah. They're in, they're in, I'm sorry.
One and two in the middle.
One and a three in the middle.
That was for the... I thought that was the purpose of putting, of us putting the pylons down the middle of the docks, so we would have a place that was safe to put the craft pots. You know, like Craig was saying, Dill, everybody, you're getting an excellent job. Terry, thank you. Craig, Noily. A lot of things I was going to say, they've already said. But I truly thought that was the whole purpose of making sure that our pylons are going to be down in the middle of the dock, because the craft pots aren't that much wider than the pylons. It is just so impractical for us to be able to do, bring the pots anyplace else. We're operating on a timing and, and all the boats, we pretty much need to book the boats at the same time so we can kind of split loads. Uh, when I first entered the business, you know, I tried to stagger loads, everybody coming in at once. But then I seen where, from Loiley, thank you, that if we could have everybody going out at the same time, we could kind of split the loads and, and so everybody's loaded equal. So, one one's not overloaded, the other one's underloaded. You know, which is also crazy, another safety issue when we didn't overload the boat. But, we basically fish from six AM till eleven AM and then we try to get our first whale, watch it out at eleven thirty. And the sooner we can push those up, the more folks we can take and more, more folks we can, we can keep back. If everybody's coming in at the same time, it's gonna be a mad rush to get, be the first one over to the bar for whatever program we're putting in the docks. I mean, God, the harbor was restored in nineteen fifty, I don't think there's ever been an issue of pots being in the way of anything else. There's, to me, there is zero liability with crab pots and as like Terry said, they have to actually work to your advantage to a certain degree, because it is something you can grab onto and they're not gonna move. I really strongly believe, and I got a question for the, for our insurance agent. What is the liability, was, was this something that came about from another port? Or, um, I don't, I don't quite get where the liability comes from, from crab pots being on the docks. Maybe she can't hear me, so I'll come through around.
Alicia, did you hear Mr. Mc?
That, hi, yeah, so I was just, yes, sorry, and I was just commenting that there are other docks, or sorry, other marinas that either don't allow them at all, or they have a space that is quite a distance away. So, I was just referencing, referencing another marina that was up north of you where they have a location, but it's still a decent walk. So, it really doesn't smell anything, like I haven't found anything that's very similar to what you were saying as far as a working dock and what their solution's been.
Yeah, I mean, are those, are those charter boats or are those sport boat ports?
Um, this marina that I'm talking about has both sections, um, they have both a sport and, um, sport and then also commercial, and it's still the same distance. But again, they're not doing the dual role that you're doing, where you're having both whale and, and sport fishing. It's just one or the other.
So, um, I, I, I mean, was there an instance where there was a liability issue with crab pots in the past? Or, or I don't understand where this is all coming, coming from?
Yeah, that's a great question, and if I go back and I can go back about twenty years on your liability records, I've not seen a claim, um, from the crab pots or any, you know, issues or anything that's been brought up by the harbor master.
So, I mean, I don't, I, I guess I don't understand where the, the issue is with crab pots, if they're not a liability.
Okay, listen to Kim. Uh, the reason that this came up and I had Ms. Johnson come to take a tour of the docks is because it came up in conjunction with part of the harbor commission discussion on ordinance and storage. Where, it was a big deal considering what we wanted to do as storage, I think you remember it coming up. I'd also heard from some counselors that the new docks, they didn't want any storage on them. They were designed to be clean, is kind of what they were thinking about doing on that. So, with the issue of whether or not what our liability is, because the city always has to deal with the liability, just like you, your businesses have to deal with your own liability. So, when we had Ms. Johnson come down, she took that tour of the docks and, and saw the condition of them, you know, particularly with regards to the personal, personal piers, so, and she didn't speak to that. I think we posted the report and everybody could see it, and I don't know if you noticed, but I did post an update from my tour professor on that as well. So, but it came up because, uh, through various discussions, we threw comments that people made and my job is to help protect the city and everybody and to be respectful. That's how it came up.
I got to do, it was my understanding that the, the main reasoning behind this was because of the liability issue with the.
It is, absolutely.
So, um, I mean, everybody's done a great job of cleaning up the dock, cleaning up all the other stuff inside the crab pots on the docks. And that's easily rectified, you know? Mattlin Coco was a liability, was kind of the police force for all of that and he would get on everybody. God rest his soul. And, uh, and Lars also too. And, um, we will, we are, we readily admit that it did get away from us a little bit. So, some boats still have a little more advantage of it than, than others did, for sure. But, I think if it's just the crab pots, you know, and, and we don't stack them anymore than five potting, I failed to see any kind of, I mean, they, they actually add, they enhance the harbor. I mean, they, you know, it's something that tourists see, it's an attraction, you know? Um, it, it'll affect every business in town. And, um, I mean, to me, the only solution would be to, to create storage lockers for the crab pots. I don't know if you guys are concerned about the wiring, you know, the wiring on the pots or, or if the pots fall over, which I've never, ever seen a pot that would be stacked and they're almost impossible to fall over. But, I mean, the storage lockers, of course, they would, we would want them uniformed and everything. They would have, they would, they would be like forty inches wide by eighty-four by sixty inches tall. So, to me, that would be the only solution, but, um, it's just, gosh, man, this, this town's been here, I mean, Stan Allen started running this thing in nineteen thirty-eight and we've never had any kind of issues like this. Literally thousands and thousands of trips, you know? Um, and crabbing's always been here, man, we're a working harbor and that's kind of that part of the attraction of our unique harbor.
I don't remember crab pots early on. I think when the charters started going, I could, I could be totally wrong, but what I remember is that when Coco went belly up and everybody started doing rockfish trips, that that's when they also offered crab. Before that, there was never, that I remember, any crab pots, or very few crab pots in Eagle Bay at the docks. And, uh, that's what I remember, so I don't know what the long history is, but that's my recollection.
Well, Coco really started going south like late nineties and early two thousands, you know?
I was thinking about the eighties, seven, okay.
Yeah. But, um, I'm not familiar with before that myself, man, but, I mean, it's, uh, they're so invasive, you know? And I thought that was the whole purpose of us putting pilings down the middle of the docks. So.
Down the middle.
Down the middle.
Down the middle.
And this on the charter idea is based on you deciding for, for your folks to walk back and forth and get to bite each other, go in both directions on, you decided to dock and all that, so. I think this is about all I got for now, um.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Go.
Go, thank you.
I think Terry got the form right here.
Hey, guys, I'm Eva Marvel, how to turn around with dockside charters, everybody knows that. Um, I agree with just about everything that everyone just come up here and sell ideas first, coming up with good ideas and trying to figure out good solutions. I'm seeing two different issues, one of them's seeing a liability issue, which, um, one of them that no one has brought up is that every warrant holder has insurance that covers everything that we keep on docks, including crab pots. So, all the boat, all the boat owners, all of their insurance covers and liability issues. If anybody were to trip over a crab pot, our boats cover them. Um, as far as liability issues with crab pots, I think everybody's pretty much covered it already. I don't really see any practical way to see any of these guys move on crab pots up and down the grounds at five o'clock in the morning, I mean, you're, it's just not, it's not feasible. And it actually creates a bigger liability for the city in case somebody does fall, somebody does trip, someone ends up in the bay. Property wise, that doesn't matter so much, it's more, you know, you're talking about people putting crab pots in back of trucks if they have trucks and taking them down in the morning and it just, that doesn't really make any sense. Um, as far as the idea of having some sort of floating dock or renting out more space, that is something that I think South Beach does, which what they do is they actually have a floating dock, it's not an actual vessel or a barge, it's more, uh, it would have to be a flat surface, if it's a vessel, then we're talking about like stepping in and stepping out. So, it would be more of, it would need to be something flat, but also, um, you know, location wise, you're still okay, it's at the end of dock two, let's say, then everybody reading the dock two is gonna be walking back and forth on the dock, kind of all crab pots. Um, but that gets into kind of the two issues that I see, so liability and then also potential solutions. As far as right now, for the current docks that we have, I think that we, more of an issue with unevenness or, you know, I, all of the different issues that we already dealt, which is why we're trying to get new docks. Um, I think this issue right now with the docks that we have and in looking at what everyone's said to clean everything up, the crab pots are lined down the center there. I think someone mentioned three and a half inches outside each side of the piling. There's plenty of space for the docks that we have now. I think that coming up with a solution for the new docks in the future is probably gonna be a different conversation, whether we talk about floating docks, renting more space, uh, storage lockers, or even just building something simple and easy just to make kind of a barrier so people don't, you know, run into them or whatnot. Um, but I think for the purposes of, of now and going forward, I think we should probably focus on the docks that we have. And then once, because we all know how the projects go, you know, it could take longer, it could take shorter, materials, things like that. Um, once docks two, three and four, the new ones get put in, then we can look at dimensions and inches and figure out, okay, what would be a practical way to either store them on the dock or do some sort of floating dock situation? Maybe allow side high, I don't know, it's, it's a, a conversation that would have to happen once there are new docks in place. Um, because right now, we're working with the docks that we have, which we all know they have issues. So, you know, we have done everything we can to clean things up and, you know, I, I'm down there every day. I do see that there is a lot of stuff on the docks and it's, as far as I could tell today, all the charter boats have cleared everything up. I can't speak for the sport boats or any of the other warrant holders, but I can't speak for at least dockside and from what I saw from the trading boats too, everyone seemed to clean everything up. Um, that's just what we're trying to do, we're trying to work with you guys, we're trying to, you know, make it more aesthetically pleasing and also acknowledge that, you know, we can get all the other stuff off the dock, but there's just no feasible way to keep the crab pots off the dock right now with the way the docks are. When the new ones come in, I think that would be a totally different discussion based on how they turn out, how they look. And, you know, we need to start talking about dimensions and renting out more spots and, and where it goes, we go. Because I'm gonna talk about like new dock configuration, things that like the harbor restoration committee is working on. Um, as far as like Liliana and her ones bringing up, so I don't think there's ever been any issue of anybody tripping or falling or, or results on a crab pot and actually insurance saving, so that too. Um, but, you know, we're, all these guys have been in the industry for a very long time. They're very competent of making sure customers and people, you know, we, we all watch for each other, we're kind of a community, so. You see someone looks like they're gonna fall in the bay, there's usually someone there that's gonna grab them. Um, it's not like we just let people do whatever, you know, we kind of, we, everyone knows. You know, it's like, hey, it's slow tag, ramps, ramp fully seat, go slow, hold on, you know, things like that. Um, I just, I feel like there's just a couple, there's two kind of issues with the docks now versus the docks when they're new and I think those are kind of two different conversations, so.
Chris, would you have anything?
No, I don't really have anything to add.
Okay.
For the most part, but we, we look at the liability of having pots on the dock versus pots not on the dock and unloading, loading them, that's, I think that's the big one, so.
Can you just, um, tell them that there's a, the new schematic for the docks right up there? Oh, yes. That shows the first two docks where the charter boats are gonna be and then the five piers. So, this is the, if anybody wants to come see it, we know this is the, the current schematics, the way that these are currently built. The, the meeting closes this week. Um, so, this is the docks one, you know, the current docks one, two, three, four. So, um, if you wanna, that's where the charter boats are, just come up and see what's happening.
Call me Booner. Running a boat out of Eagle Bay for a few couple of years now. I just wanna say that I support everything that's said here, my friends and colleagues here. They've been doing the same thing for, for years, longer, longer than me. And regardless of when crabbing started in Eagle Bay relative to charter fishing and stuff like that, is, is totally irrelevant right now because it's been since nineteen, in the seventies or earlys. And damn near forty years speaks for itself without the incident or cause. And the insurance, uh, person there said that there has not been a claim in twenty years going back. I mean, that just, that speaks for itself, so I just, I, I just wish that you addressed it with, uh, uh, something more than aesthetics in mind because the crab pots are no good, in my opinion. And they add a lot of attention to the harbor's function. I mean, this, this working harbor is meant to be a working harbor, it's not a yacht. Anyway, thanks for listening and hope you think it's a little hard.
What are you studying?
Oh, I took the pen too.
Is there someone else?
So, can I make a final comment since I'm starting to have a history of a little bit of what happened? No, it might be, the old guy left fishing in Miss River. You look like it.
Like I said last time, Carrie, your great-grandfather.
So, my dad crabbed out a deer in the sixties with the yard bill and then he sold it to the lobby butts in the old old hat. Um, my family, my mom picked crab for Ellen Bates, this fish plant in those days. And the difference between a commercial crab and the operation you have here now is in those days, it was all commercial boats. They only load at the start of the season, take all their vessels, all their pots to sea, put their pots out and those pots stay off the dock until you get back. Those pots weigh anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and eighty pounds for a big dish pot. These pots are twenty-five pounds, they're not like other pots in other ports, you're unique. Eagle Bay is so unique, pretty amazing what's gone on and the whale business is getting so much bigger and potentially getting bigger. I think you gotta support these guys in development, it's, and that's what I've seen, there was no whale watching in those days. Today, it's growing and growing and it's part of the whole operation. These boats are successful because of what you do in the sport. If you make a decision wrong, you could affect the success of what you have in the future yet. So, that's my comment.
So, I, oh, yeah, um, I have a question, you know me, I am not a sure person, I don't get on boats, so. It's not, for me, it's not about aesthetics, it has really nothing, it's about liability. So, it's not, for me, it's not about aesthetics. It has really nothing. It's about liability. It's about what our insurance company has told us to please happen. So we've also talked about other things that are hazards on the docks. Um, one of which is the boats with the things that go up front to go over the dock. What are those called?
Well, you can call it the bow strut or anything you want.
Yeah, well, you have to comment where they do.
Well, I'm a boat that usually stick over the dock and one of the guys mentioned to me, it's easy if you're going bow in to have a line that's a certain length and you put it midships. And then that's where your bow is supposed to stay, it's back in the dock. There's one boat down there now I just looked at. He's three feet over.
Yeah.
Well, then that case, they sit back in.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna go bow in, it's really easy with the sideline to make it so it fits and splits.
Okay, so I, I see that as a bigger problem than the crab pods.
I might mention on this same subject. And if you go bow in, in Newport, they have a kind of little pyramid shape that fits in there.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where they allow them to put their pots. And if the bow is in, that, that costs a lot of money to belt that and all those stocks. And don't necessarily recommend it either here because you have a unique situation compared to other ports. You're a lot rougher in the winter. And you also have the crab season's gonna end here in October fifteenth. All those pots may come off, mostly, yeah, it's gonna take them home or gone. They're not gonna be there for at least three months till after the crab season's over. But you're in a unique port. You have to address it and I hope you'll spend time down there talking to your fleet because these guys have talents. They're not, everybody wants to be a charter skipper in Deepwater Bay. There's times I watch these guys go fishing and I admire what they do and I've been doing my whole life. These fifty-foot boats go out this channel. It's, it's amazing process in the winter.
Thanks. I have a different aspect for you. I don't know, I think you all know, you've gotten it, but I worked, our grant to work with Wheel the World, which is specifically about accessibility travel in places that you can go that are wheelchair and walker accessible. And I can show you pictures. But this year, we took fourteen wheelchairs on the Gator. They took nine on the outer limits and they took four on the Mariner. And they were easily able to get down the ramps and onto those boats even with the crab pods there. Cause that was my first concern is how my, I mean Tyler's perfect example of it every single day. So as far as that safety piece goes, just from, my, my job is obviously bring tourists here. And one of those is to highlight our accessibility. And by doing that, the crab pods didn't impose any issues whatsoever. They had no, we didn't have to move them to the side. We didn't have to do anything extra to get my wheelchairs down and get them to be able to experience being on a boat. And I mean, I have some really cool pictures if you wanna see them. People who emphatically told us they'd never been able to go out and see this because there was no way for them to get onto these boats. And we found ways to do that. The other piece I guess to speak about is again, the tourism. So I started speaking with a lot of our DMOs. So Travel Oregon, Akva, Destination Management of Oregon and other places. And they said, quote, "People come from far and wide to our coast to experience the seafood feast." And the action of being able to pull in the crab pods is the number two reason people have selected on these surveys that we point, put out. So the reasons that people come to People Bay, seventy-three percent between these fourteen surveys that I read, said they come for fishing, crabbing, and whale watching. If we lose even one piece of that, that economic devastation to these small businesses, not just the charter companies and the charter captains, but these small businesses could be detrimental. I think that we will easily become a pass-through town and we've worked really hard to stop being a pass-through town. Right? My common phrase is I wanna take us from a destination to a tradition, want people to continue to come. And then outside of the chamber, sitting in the trade men's office, one of the number one things I hear, oh yeah, I gotta add crabbing. I don't even eat crab, but I wanna be able to pull up the crab pods. And they enjoy taking, I can't tell you the amount of selfies that I've seen of people taking pictures on it because it's, it's an iconic piece of People Bay. I mean, we have, I just, I, I hope when we talk about safety, one of the things you think about is the physical demands on the captains and their crew of having to take them up and down every day, the heavy equipment, not just the, the physical strain, but now the financial strain because let's be real, it's gonna be a lot harder for them to store them in different spots and have to go up and down every single day. So I look at it from, from two different angles, well, three really, because I also go fishing as often as I possibly can. Losing that piece is gonna be huge for the whole People Bay community. If you want those stats or pictures and that, you can share them anytime.
Thank you, Melissa.
Uh huh.
All righty. Any other comments? Counselors, do you have any other questions for the folks that have spoken?
Yes, no, I have a question for Alicia though.
Yes, yeah, we'll start with Alicia next. Oh, I don't have any for her. Okay. Now, no other public comments? All right. So we'll turn the floor over to Alicia, our insurance agent.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, this is obviously a very tough conversation, um, just as there's a lot of different pieces. And, and I can't talk more about liability, but, um, one of the areas we're, we're kind of talking through is, you know, can we change our mortgage agreement to make sure that there is a full transfer of risk? And, and you have to also remember when I was down in August, there was a lot more on the docks in there now that you're describing. So it's kind of a-
Alicia, sorry, can you speak more into your microphone, please?
Yeah, yeah. I can try. Hopefully that's a little better.
Yeah, that's better.
I was just saying that when I was down in August, you know, the docks now from what this group is explaining and, and talking about, it was a compilation of items where we had more than just the crab pods on there. And I've been looking at some just kind of historic Google images of the marina and you can see the crab pods in different areas. Um, one of the recommendations and one of our concerns is obviously not to have any exclusions onto the city's policy, which we don't have. But I do think that if we combine everything and you are able to, you know, look at, you know, docks one and two to where it's all, you know, put together and then not throughout the marina, might just be, you know, a better help. And then we obviously have the, we don't have ropes out or any of the other items out there to, again, add on to a potential issue. Is there any other, um, item or question that you'd like me to address?
Yes, Frank, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand what you just said. And, um, and then the other thing is, um, when, um, somebody justified that they have insurance that covers their equipment and if somebody gets hurt, um, what liability levels would that be required in? Is there a way to protect the city? You know, fully, if it's somebody else's property on our docks, but if we allow the crab pods on our docks, even if they're, they cover their liability, it seems that we're still liable as we've allowed these pods.
So we require under the mortgage agreement, and I have at least for the last three years, looked at all of those certificates that come in and I'll even call the agent if I need to. Um, but that's something that Carla sends over to me and I'm listed on that agreement. Um, so we can bolster that. I believe we're either at five hundred thousand or a million in coverage for the whole value, which also extends to liability on the docks as, um, one of the ladies was talking about. So what happens is if their property causes damage or bodily injury to somebody else, that sits under their liability. And we ask and we require and I confirm that the city is named additionally insured. And the reason why the city has to be named additionally insured is for any vicarious liability, meaning the city gets named for a slip, trip, and fall, but it was really from a charter. So we go back to the mortgage contract, we go back to that insurance and we tender that claim back to the liable party to remove the city from that liability. And that's a very common transfer of risk. Um, but I just need to make sure, and the reason why I wrote the report is that if we have ordinances and we have a, um, a requirement of the, the charters, that we also have our requirements met as far as the entirety and/or, you know, that everybody's following the rules equally. So I think you're saying that you don't understand maybe my comment. So I can't comment, you know, good, bad, or indifferent on if I think it's acceptable. I'm just saying that I've not seen, um, issues at my marinas based from crab pods. Most of our damage comes from water or wind or storm to the physical docks. Um, but then the other, uh, marinas that I do insure, they do not store because they have another area for storage. And then they also don't have that element where they're doing both whale and sport fishing.
May I ask a question there?
Yes, please.
Alicia, you mentioned that we had not had a, a claim with regard to the crab pods, but we've had claims over the last two decades, right?
Okay. Uh, yes, you have. You've actually had, not have had that many. Um, Brady knows the majority of them, but the city runs very, um, very clean on claims on all lines of coverage. Um, they do a fantastic job and that is a process that we talk through. Um, we do what's called the best practices survey every three years to make sure that we're at the upper end of our risk mitigation and management. But no, we-
A lot of- Let me ask one more question. In a lot of, uh, sport activities, you can think of like skydiving or if you were to go out and, uh, get aboard this biplane that flies over People Bay, people sign a disclaimer or a waiver, uh, absolving the operator, the city or whatever, of all liability in the, in the event they're injured or killed. Would waivers like that indemnify the city?
Um, so the contractual relationship that you're probably talking about is between that patron, right? The citizen coming on and then the charter. And so that, that's this one, that's one contract. And then we have a separate contract. So there could be some, I mean, I, I can't offer to help bolster their waiver. I mean, it's only gonna be as good, right, as that waiver and whatever happens, but that could be an element. Um, are the city's opportunity is just to make sure that on those more, that mortgage agreement that we are named additionally insured? And that we can dictate, I guess, what insurance they carry up to a certain level. Um, in Oregon, we're also governed by the Oregon tort cap limits. So we don't have, unless it's a federal claim, don't have the same kind of liability limits as you would in another state.
So if somebody got physically harmed, needed medical attention, I'm not even talking death, but broke a leg, um, slipped and hurt their back, what is the liability? What, what would the liability limits be needed to cover something like that?
So in Oregon, we have two types of immunity for cities. We have discretionary immunity and then recreational use immunity. And because the city does not charge for patrons that come on to our property, the same as any city parks, um, we would look for other recreational use immunity where we would not be held liable unless we knew about a danger and chose not to fix it. So we even have protections if we don't have in our capital improvement plans that, you know, let's say we're gonna do project A, B, and C and then we're gonna wait on the other projects. If we do what we said and the others are pushed out, then we still have the, the immunity.
So, um, if there's crab pods on the middle of the dock and we've allowed that, does that, we still fall under the recreational use immunity?
So those are two separate items. The concern that I had is that you had signage at the top that said that you would not allow that and then you're allowing it. So the decision needs to be made if you're going to allow it or not, and then that signage needs to follow suit. That's where I feel that there's liability. I'm not saying that I'm for against the crab pot element. Again, I think if it's consolidated, it's less of a risk for you and it's more, you know, it's a benign risk overall. But right now, we're allowing it and the docks weren't kept at the standard and then the signage says something different.
So are you saying that it's okay to have crab pods as long as it's cleaned up?
I can't make a, a, an opinion that way, but again, I've not, personally, they don't bother me. I don't see that they're as big of an issue as all the other tripping hazards that I saw that day. But from this group of, you know, people that came up, they said that it's cleaned up. Um, I just need to make sure that your signage batches your intention. And as I look through, um, what, um, Mr. Um, Olson had said, it says that the city's original ordinance establishes that personal gear is not to be stored on the docks. So I have to go back to the legal piece, not what we want right now. And that's where you get to make that decision.
And, and crab pods are personal gear?
Correct.
Yeah.
New signs.
Here, I have another question. And this was for Commissioner Martin. You said, uh, the mitigation, does the mitigation prevent us from having crab pods on the new docks?
Doesn't pick up any more space. Does any dock itself, the mitigation issues, what, what happens to water? So the, um, crab pods don't shade the, um, you know, not concerned about the shade, not, not, that's what, that's what we're engineering. Not issue. Let me specifically ask that question here. Is there any further discussion from the council?
Is this discussion?
Yeah, this is discussion.
Okay, I'd like to say a couple of things. One is I'd like to address this, uh, heavy versus light theory on crab pods. Just a little fun of it. Uh, I heard tonight, uh, somebody say, well, they're not that heavy. And another skipper said, well, they're backbreaking. So I went down to dock three and gave a lift and I thought they were about forty pounds with the, with the, uh, buoy in it. But I'll go with the, the lighter weight. He said, okay, if they're thirty pounds each, there were ninety-eight crab pods down there. Uh, uh, and, uh, that weighs in at twenty-nine hundred and forty pounds. So there is some weight on a dock from crab pods. And as we know, these docks, according to PND, weren't considered the crab pods, crab pods was not considered in the design of the boats as designated. Uh, long-term storage would increase the overwater coverage and result in additional mitigation, lower the float freeboard and cause damage to surfaces and to equipment. You've also got crewers' bins, boardboys' chairs, hoses, garbage cans, probably another couple of thousand pounds of stuff. And, uh, I wanna say this, I don't care how much stuff is down there. I really don't. I don't care if there are refrigerators on those docks. Whatever helps the charter industry, I'm for. What I would like to see is that this stuff gets paid for, that the, the mitigation, the cost of, of the damage of thousands of pounds of, uh, uh, gear rocking that dock back and forth with the surge of tide and everything else causes the wear and tear that we're into right now. And, uh, my, if all these problems would be absent today if we had more revenue coming in on the harbor. Uh, the fact is that, uh, this harbor, uh, runs at about a four hundred thousand dollar deficit every year. Even though in the budget, we, you know, routinely say we're gonna put in X amount of money, we always end up having to transfer additional hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what this does is it comes at a cost to, uh, parks and streets, uh, which have, the spending on those have deteriorated significantly. So all I wanna do is, is see our, this, this tremendous economic engine that we have in this harbor, uh, pay for itself and not be subsidized by the city. And if we had the kind of revenue coming in here, we wouldn't have to bug, uh, the state for a grant. We wouldn't have to do, uh, all of these things that were, we, we could just go down and repair those docks any way we wanted. We probably wouldn't have to go to the EPA and the Fish and Wildlife and everybody else who was repairing these things. We don't even have the money, uh, to do that now because the deferred maintenance is so huge. So, uh, one of the things that's going on in our harbor right now is that, uh, that back in, uh, twenty seventeen, uh, the harbor commission figured that we had, uh, six point four million dollar impact to the economy here, a hundred thousand fishermen down there. Uh, si- if, if today that figure is ten million, if, uh, fees are up twenty-five percent for fishing expeditions and so on. If, if today that figure is ten million, if fees are up twenty-five percent for fishing expeditions and so on, out of that, we generate seventy thousand dollars in mortgage. Seventy thousand dollars. That is less than one percent of the economic value generated by the harbor. So we have a, a situation where we have this large and thriving businesses, and we have very low returns to the city. And we just, and this is why we're here tonight, is that all of this deferred maintenance over the years, which was brought on by artificially depressed mortgage rates, the lack of storage, the lack of rents, the lack of charter business fees, the lack of enforcement, has led us into this where we're at now. Counselor Reck, who I thought brought a good idea tonight, by the way, on this, on this idea of floating mortgage, which I think is just, you know, really good, and I like Counselor Stern's play there also. But our mortgage rates, she did a study on mortgage rates, and I believe that she found that we were about forty to fifty percent less than anybody else in your harbor around. Three years ago, I did a study that demonstrated that it was the same thing. Okay? And you've gotta remember that, you know, these are ports that are supported by tax. All of these ports have a tax, and yet their rates, just which they add on to the tax revenues that they get, are forty percent to fifty percent higher than what we charge. There are many, these are just the things that, that we need to, to address in order to avoid these kind of situations. I hope that you guys, I think, I wanna compliment everybody for coming up with great ideas tonight. I've heard ideas on cleaning up and reorganizing and repainting, which I think is impractical because it doesn't go far enough. But to build and rent new space, I think it's a great idea. To create floating docks, as, as was pointed out, is how they do it in, in South Beach. I think it was a great idea. Storage lockers, I heard. I think that's impractical because it would be, you know, requiring the people to lose stuff. And, and I, even the argument that we do nothing made sense to a degree, and that it argues for self-insuring. And that's why I asked our insurance agent if we had had, what kind of claims that we've had, can we do a waiver that exempts us from, you know, even suicide, of course, but it exempts us, and has done these waivers do a very good job of, of protecting businesses and municipalities. So I think that that, you know, you can't dismiss the idea of having insurance. That would be actually ludicrous in a way. And it's getting very difficult to get commercial insurance. Renewals are hard to get. Brokers are hard to find. Good luck. I could just have any insurance at all. And I've heard people, people come to me and say, "Hey, we need an insurance agent." And I'm like, you know, "Good luck." And that, but so I wanna thank everybody here. I've heard some great ideas. I think we're gonna fix this. I want the, the Harbor Commission, I hope the Harbor Commission will double tonight and think about ways that we can increase our revenue streams down in the harbor so that the city gets a bigger return off of the business. We, we wanna have healthy, thriving commercial activities in this harbor. Gab O'Brien has a right. This is a working harbor. This is what makes this a destination town. People love this. And I love to see it. But we need to create more revenue in this harbor and, and and one of the steps tonight I heard from Fran and Valerie are, I think, in the right direction, and backed up by a few folks to do to a harsh degree. I, I think that's the way to go.
Thank you, counselor. Is there any other discussion? So let's go ahead with our next steps. Yeah. Oh, ideas are next. Okay, I can start. Essentially, we, we need a decision of the next meeting. I put it on the agenda for discussion and the determination. If there's particular way you want this to be where we can discuss that. I'm not sure we can bring the ordinance in the final version to you then because I won't know until then what you want. So that's what we would be having, is we would provide that direction in that particular area.
Hey, you know, there's another place that you can put those crab pots, and that's on the west side of the harbor, where Kerry Mullen has a loose box over there. That's city property also. Did you mention that, Valerie?
It's, it's not. It's, it's, that area is not. Property not saleboat.
Where you have a sailboat?
Yeah, her sailboat.
Their docks are.
No, they own that. The rest of the docks, if you look at the survey, those docks, there's a very small portion of them. That's the, um, her boats are all in the property.
Out of the water.
Yeah.
Let's.
You have to look at the survey.
Okay, well, that's immaterial. So I think the next step will be, do you have it on the next agenda on the nineteenth is the next council meeting? So I'll have a decision then. So thank you all for coming. Comments like Counselor Lucy said were very, very enlightening and very helpful communically. And so we'll see you on the nineteenth. Thank you, Alicia. Oh, thank you, Alicia.